Get going on city council work session for June twenty one, two thousand and twenty two. But we have three, only three topics this early evening. First is park SDC analysis. Kristen, are you wanting to kick it off or Erica? Who's the point?
I can, I can kick it off.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Erica. I'm here, but thank you, Erica.
You're welcome. So good evening, Mayor, uh, councillors. This is a follow-up work session to your May third work session on the park SDC analysis update um for the park and recreation being. John Gullard Bichi from FCS Consulting Group, who's been working on this project this year this evening. Um, I know that on May third, you had asked some questions for us to look into. And those two questions were, when did other jurisdictions update their SDCs? And then you wanted us to provide an analysis of a phasing implementation plan. And so we have that information for you tonight, and John's going to go over that information. And then if you can, I'm gonna give you the controls and I think you can just press.
Thank you. Yeah, so we'll, I'll do a really quick refresher on STCs. I know that you, you know what they are. Briefly go through what the current STC is, the calculated park SDC, just to, just to remind you all of what, what was talked about on May third, and then we'll get right into answering your questions and next steps. So just a quick refresher, we're talking about the one-time fees paid at the time of development by new development, not ongoing rates. These are, these are the charges that growth pays. So the statute tells us they're available for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation in parks. I think you have all the other, all the other services, including parks, and this is an update to that one. You can only use system development charges on capital projects, and we calculate them based on capital costs with one small exception. They often have a future and an existing component, the existing components of buy-in to any unused capacity that's available for future users. There's no unused capacity in the park system, the way that we've calculated this, so it's only the improvement fee. Um, and we'll show you that in a minute.
Real quick, so you say STCs are available for these. It's just one SDC though, right? Is there an SDC?
Look, there's only one, there's only one park, right, every bucket, there's a different SDC.
Okay, and it's calculated differently in this, but if I'm a builder, I, do I see one number or do I see five numbers?
You get them all.
You get them all.
And some of them are not even sure where they're casted from, like Cleveland or services.
Okay, right. Yeah, or both, you're having a local one and a regional one.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see it.
Okay, great.
They are, they are intended to recover a share of system facilities as opposed to local. So what I mean by that is we're talking about water, we're not talking about meter, we're talking about a share of the reservoir, a share of the transmission, you know, the big stuff and like. So we follow the law very carefully. It's, it's now O R S two ninety seven, two-two-three dot two-nine-seven through three sixteen, because they added in twenty twenty-one a section requiring cities that have websites to post their methodology on the website, make sure that it's very transparent what's being charged and why. But we know the law, we know the case law, and we follow it very carefully, keep you out of trouble. So this is just a, a real overview of the calculation framework. I talked about the buy-in to existing facilities, which we don't have in this case, that's called a reimbursement fee. Our focus is going to be on the improvement fee. That picture, the list of capital projects to be constructed, in this case, park facilities. We go through and identify the portion of each project, which is adding capacity for future users. The sum total of those capacity increasing projects and costs is the numerator, and the denominator is the growth that that capacity will serve. In this case, population equivalents converted to dwelling units, and then there's a non-residential component as well. So this is the current park SDC, just looking out at that far right column for a single family, a new single-family dwelling unit, um, a, a little under nine thousand dollars for a multifamily dwelling unit, sixty-seven fifty-three manufactured home, ninety-eight sixty-seven point four. You could read it, non-residential, that ninety-three fifty-seven is actually per employee, but you don't, you don't impose it per employee, you know by the land use and the size of the commercial establishment. Industry standard information to estimate the number of employees they will have, and that's how their charge is calculated. So this is a schedule by land usage for footage.
Right, so even if you have a data center that is being built on an industrial site, well, the industrial zoning says that normally with some support on average fifty employees, they pay for fifty employees.
Exactly.
Or is another type of like industrial piece assembly that, or whatever, and they actually have a hundred employees, then this is all evens out.
General office building, they might have a lot more employees.
So something about this doesn't pass the sniff test, because it seems like I'm gonna have more people in the multifamily, oh, okay, are you getting to that?
Well, no.
No, this is interesting.
I understand, but it's absolutely.
Passes the sniff test. You just don't understand that yet.
Is it, is it the occupants?
No, because it seems like there would be more people using more park services in a multifamily dwelling unit than there would in a single-family dwelling unit, because I've got four families in that multifamily dwelling unit.
So it's per unit.
Per unit.
It's per unit.
Yeah, it's per dwelling unit.
Per unit.
It's not, okay.
It is an interesting point, though, because if you're seeing the family to catch you all up ahead of your own yard, you gotta, gotta wear.
Yeah.
People that live in your apartment.
But also, but you also throw in the fact that a lot of larger multifamily projects have an onsite park.
That's true.
Yeah, or swimming. And frankly, yeah, I, I was taking that as, you know, if we turned a single plex into a.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's a different, absolutely, that's a different, yeah, plexes, how does plexes interact?
Yeah, because that, from the, we were dealing with that, and it seems like, and in fact, that I'm paying more for parks as in a manufactured home versus, that also seems weird. Well, I'm not sure why that would.
The lot sizes are smaller, so it's a higher density.
Okay.
Maybe.
They're, they're actually all population-based, so, so we look at the average occupancy by the type of dwelling unit in order to calculate these different charges by dwelling type. So it is a little odd, you know, that you would see a manufactured home, that means their average occupancy is high or was at the time of this calculation, was higher than a single-family residence and a lot higher than a multifamily dwelling unit. We see these kinds of anomalies all the time, can be had substantially higher average occupancy per multifamily dwelling unit than single-family dwelling, and you look at it and you, but, you know, you, you, they're, they're right out of the census, so. What we don't have real good data on is how does a resident of a multifamily apartment complex use parks differently from a single-family resident? It's all just population and occupancy based.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Right now. So this is the calculation that you saw in May. Of the substantial lists, about a little over sixty-eight million in project costs were identified as capacity increasing projects, we divide those by the growth in residential equivalent, so that, that's population growth and employee growth expressed as a fraction of a resident, because an employee doesn't have the same access to the park system as a full-time resident of Sherwood. Those are the folks who are coming into the city to work and then going home somewhere else. So we make an adjustment there. So the resulting schedule, you see the SDC five thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars per residential equivalent, and then using those average occupancies, which are now updated to current in that middle column of the bottom section of the table there. That's how we arrive at the schedule by dwelling unit type updated from last time. So for a single-family dwelling unit, pretty substantial increase to fourteen thousand nine ninety-seven. You see multifamily and manufactured homes now are a lot closer, nine thousand three-ten per multifamily dwelling unit or manufactured home, ninety-six twenty-two. We have an accessory dwelling unit classification now that wasn't on the previous or existing schedule, we're assuming an occupancy of one for those.
Where's that come from?
So that's an assumption we don't have, sorry. We don't have data to tell us, we don't have census data to tell us the average occupancy of ADUs yet, so that's an assumption.
Yeah, I would just, my guess is it's higher than one, just, just because.
Could be.
Community and family oriented town or schools.
And so before, currently, if somebody comes in and builds a ADU, there is no park SDC for ADU?
And when they get a permit to build an ADU, do we say for this many people?
And then, and same with all the other SDCs, is there? Just wasn't in the bucket of.
I don't think it was in the last bucket for parks. I do know that in other SDCs, I believe, there, we do have a figure, an amount.
And we did the transportation SDCs, there's not an I T E category for ADUs yet, so I don't, I, unless there was a policy adjustment made, I don't think there's an ADU category for transportation.
And then the standard state law answer. Question about the, the, the expected growth in small plexes, so duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. Is, is that differentiated in state law that we have to, for how we follow things? So it's a, it's, it's, if it's two, it's multifamily, if it's, or if it's eighty, it's multifamily.
And, and you actually have a lot of leeway here. There, there are cities that only have a single charge per dwelling unit, whether it's single-family, multifamily, manufactured home. There's nothing in the law that says you have to break it down, but certainly because your existing schedule has that breakdown, and because it is, at least in our view, more equitable, because we do have that data that tells us the average occupancy is different, it makes sense to have a schedule. But ADUs are kind of a hot topic around state, there are cities that are, as a policy, not charging ADUs because they want to encourage ADUs, and then there are others who are, who are taking, you know, an approach like this or charging them like a multifamily dwelling unit, so you have some leeway there.
Are they still replacing the funds then? Are they just taking the hit?
Yeah, essentially, yes. They're treating it as part of it, of an existing single-family residence and just foregoing the revenue that they would have gotten from that. And then you see the per-employee rate of five seventy-three, again, that will be applied by the square footage and type of business establishment. Okay, so you saw this table last time, and what we've added, that far right column, when the methodology was last adopted. So all the T H P R D ones, two all those P R D, so adopted in twenty sixteen, they, they still index, and most of these do, so that was their last methodology update, they're still indexing with inflation and have since that point, but you can see.
Current rate with the adoption date.
That's right. Yes, those are their current numbers. So yeah, Tiger goes twenty fifteen, you could see there, Toallington, twenty nineteen, Shahalum Park District in twenty seventeen. Don calls me every year for the index, so I know they're indexing for a show, been a while, and McMinnville looks like they're due for an update, but yeah.
Yeah, but there's no point putting McMinnville on the list.
They're not exactly incomparable.
Yeah, I'm not sure why. New York spelled out, just definitely.
It's all right.
It's E R G.
Yeah, that's the East Coast.
Okay. Thank you. I knew that too, but I appreciate you. Correction. And then phasing, so, you know, there, there are obviously many different ways that you could approach phasing. You can, you can adjust them every six months. What, what we developed just for discussion purposes is a five-year and a three-year phasing option. I've made an assumption about inflation going forward, what you would do is adjust them based on the actual E N R, for example, from twenty-three to twenty-four, but this is, you know, this is a common approach to you know, escalating your system development charges to a newly calculated analytical answer and very much up to you as a policy, how quickly you choose to get there, or if you, you know, if you choose to phase it at all. It's a, it's a, it's often a request of the home builders, and I guess the one other thing I'll, I'll point out is you're, you know, by our growth estimates, and these are very rough, you're adding, City Sherwood's adding, you know, between two hundred and two hundred and fifty households a year, at least by our, by our math. So if, you know, what, whatever the difference is between the phased amount and the full amount is revenue that you could be collecting during that phasing period, but again, who's to say if the growth will come in as planned or not? Yeah.
So given, given the, the difference in the areas that, from the previous slide, actually, is there, is there any evidence that that makes any kind of a difference to developers to where they develop versus, like, are they gonna say yes to Tiger and no to Sherwood because of our, no higher S D? That's what I'm thinking, but I'm just wondering, at a certain point, if we're triple or quadruple, then it's like, oh, well, I can't sell a house.
We were double in, uh, when we first woke up to update park SDCs, because in our, in around two thousand, we did a, the first upgrade in a long time, and we, we didn't double, we tripled or quadrupled. I mean, it was, we were charging very, 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 very little.
Right, I'm just wondering if, do we hear from builders that say, well, I don't, I mean, obviously, they don't love paying them, period, but does it actually make a difference, or do they just say, well, we have to tack that onto the cost of the house, and we?
The argument typically from a city side, the development community, the development community does is they take that into account for what they bought the dirt for, but it's a, it's a deal between, you know, it's an argument that then the builder makes with the seller of the dirt.
Okay.
If my mayor may not carry water, then it's a market forces, you know, undesirability.
You know, you also gotta remember, dirt is so scarce, it's, it's not like they can choose.
Right, it was if they got somebody, if they got somebody.
It's whoever gets the dirt first is gonna build their.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't heard from builders during one of our SDC updates, I can't remember which one, and they just came and gave public comment at our, the night we voted or, you know.
They're gonna sell at market rates, so this, really, this is just cutting their margin, not.
No, I know, but it is, yeah, so all I'm, and by the way, I've heard it too, from the Home Builders Association, different people that, yeah, they hate paying them, I'm just, I don't know that it has actually stopped somebody from doing a project because of them, and so that's what I'm just.
There may be anecdotes, but you know, like what you were describing, at the time, Sherwood was the fastest-growing city in the state of Oregon for, for a while there, and they had high SDCs for part of that period. Hillsborough, which is not shown here, has a, an area, South, South Hillsborough, where they, they impose system development charges that total well over forty thousand dollars for a new single-family residence, the, the five services together, and it's growing gangbusters. So, you know, percentage of home price is one thing to consider, too, they're, they're looking, the, the one thing I've heard that I think is credible is that it affects the developer's math about what they are going to build, how much they, you know, what their costs are upfront affects the type of housing that they might build, but again, market sets the price, and there are lots of stories of, of, of builders building what was intended to be affordable housing, and it doesn't end up being affordable housing, so, yeah, so we, we do hear it.
Affordable is a relative.
Right.
Well, but, but if, like, to your point, though, if, if they say, all right, well, it's cutting into our profit, so we're gonna use cheaper fittings finishes inside, does that, do we care? I mean, I know we've, with the planning commission, we said, hey, the outside has to be, you know, look nice, and here's what means, here, here's what we mean by nice, but.
I don't, I don't buy any of the arguments.
Okay, so a couple of things, the projects I've been involved with, because we don't go down here, it's, it's a question of what our margins gonna be. Really, it's like, are we gonna make twenty-five percent on this project or twenty-three percent? I mean, that's generally how we look at this stuff, but I, I would just, for everyone listening to, a lot of us know this, the big picture on this is, you know, when you go back in time with Measure Five and Measure Fifty, and how cities, the way cities get money for infrastructure was really constrained by that, we saw SDCs go up, because that was the mechanism to fund infrastructure. So yes, they're high, but we're also not really.
The tools are much more.
Yeah, three percent, you really gotta look at that big picture.
Right.
You know, it looks bad, but this is how we fund, we don't really have another mechanism unless we go out for a levy and ask our residents.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, you didn't, you know, you didn't put like a Swico or Wilson Butler for. Yeah, Oregon City or West, West Lynn, those, those, those are much more current, and they're big numbers. For me, the only, the question is, is do we phase it in at all, or do we take two years or three years to phase it in with an index? Also in that component.
Is the idea with phasing it in that you're encouraging people to start building sooner, or does that not matter at all?
So certainly, you wanna give stuff in the pipeline, you wanna, you wanna be fair to say, hey, you know, you wanna go at least six months out.
Yeah.
Um, I believe, and, and then it's, yeah, decisions, do you wanna, I've not, I think the most I've ever done is phase over two years, when I've been in office before, when it was bad, we, we did it, we it was all, it was immediate, just because it was so in the gutter in the nineties. But the development community would certainly appreciate it being phased in over two or three years.
Yeah, allows them to plan, it's one thing we've heard from them, too.
Just a reminder for everybody, I think it was the twenty, correct, I'm wrong, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one session, they formed a committee in Salem to look at SDCs. We asked at that time that they don't just look at SDCs in a, in a vacuum, they have the whole funding structure around it, so I'm sure there's gonna be some push this next session to limit what we can do, limit what we're doing.
We're, we're part of that team, that's, that's, that's developing that study, and it's really interesting, but we, we are, yeah, doing exactly what you said, we're trying to look at the whole, the, also the decline in federal funding, you know, if you think about a lot, especially wastewater treatment, and some of the water treatment facilities in older cities were built, were grant-funded, federally funded, and so.
Yeah, they're built in sixty-seventies and, well, fifty-sixties, seventies, and then nineteen-eighty, basically, the money went to one percent of the original, of the prior, prior level.
Yeah, so another pressure on local governments to pick up the slack and build infrastructure, and that's been another contributor to system development charges going up all the time, but, yeah, good, that, that study will be done in December, and we're, we're working hard at it.
That feels like that would encourage us to not phase it in and to just have it be, hey, we're gonna do it in six months, and it'll be a hundred percent, just because we don't, I'm gonna be shocked if they come back and say, oh, you can, yeah, you can raise up more, right, it'll. Yeah, and so it feels like they're almost incentivizing bad behavior by saying, get it, get it while you can.
I wouldn't even necessarily call it bad behavior.
Well, no, I know, but it's bad behavior from their point of view, right? They're trying to say, hey, we need to lower these, and so by, by putting a deadline on it, it's telling us, well, we better, we're gonna be capped for the next three years, we gotta get it while we can.
Well.
But I've heard this, you know, but any, from the Salem topic, that's great, on the development community, like edge communities like us, you know, people buy dirt, you know, on speculation, for a very, very low dollar amount, and then, and they wait until it comes in, and then, guess what? They're selling it to themselves at, at, at market rate, and so even that kind of scenario is always interesting.
West is already optioned out.
Yeah.
To big land speculators.
So, yeah. Other thoughts or comments?
Well, I'm in favor of doing it all at once. I think the appetite for parks in this community is really, really high. Everyone wants it, we hear about it all the time. We got the laundry list of, of things that went into this analysis that the community wants. So I just, like, we'll leave the money on the table if we phase it in, and I'd rather collect the full, full budget of our services they want.
I think if you phased it in over, I think in years enough time for those developers to react.
So six months, six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Other thoughts? Thoughts?
I'm, I'm okay with six months, six months. I just wonder if Sean had any.
Nope, I'm on board, it, it makes sense.
Easy to produce that schedule for you.
Anything else?
Well, just for, this is just a reminder that the SDCs don't cover the whole cost, unfortunately, just that growth-related portion, and then what to expect, one of the, one of the requirements of the law is that there's a notice period before you can adopt the charges, so that the public hearing will be in August to consider adopting the full phase, as you see there, discounting. Looks like you've settled on modified phase then.
Yeah.
And what, will it have cost indexing no matter what, or is we're going with that, right?
You, that, that is in your code and will remain in your code, yes.
So, two questions, one on that, what, how is it indexed, what's that?
I think it's E N R, but I'm not, I'm not sure. Some of the parks ones have a land component, so I don't remember off the top of my head which, which it is, but I'm pretty sure part of it is based, is based on the engineering news record construction cost index, which is a published construction related.
Accurately follow the, the inflation received construction costs, which is.
It tries, yeah. I, I think that, I think it's lagging, but it's, they do it monthly, so they're, you know, you know, we're up at nine percent now. So it, it is, it's as good as we, it's as good as we know exists.
We do it, and we're doing it annually, every, every, started every legit.
Interesting, want to clarify, I mean, it goes back some, Kayla was talking about it at the beginning, the, the Plex issue. So if, just, I just make sure I understand that, if we do a triplex, it's three, we try to three read.
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure.
If it's all, it's all per unit.
If there's an existing single-family house that gets redeveloped into a triplex, then they have to pay two new.
Exactly, yep. Yeah, actually, depending on the code, they might pay three times the multifamily minus the first.
That makes better, yeah, it's actually better that way, it's actually more than two.
Right.
It changes.
Right.
Okay, other thoughts? We're ahead of schedule.
What's the notice period?
Ninety days. So I think the notice has been.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's been out for that August public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Great, thank you.
Good job, all around. Josh?
Which topic next?
Related to you. Discuss recruitment of Josh two point oh. Or so Josh was good enough to send out requests for proposals from recruiting firms, and he sent those all out to everybody. Also got. Um, also got. Um, an email today about if we were to do it internally.
Internally or partially internally?
Partially internally. And the timelines of each proposal and the cost of each proposal. So.
Just a couple of cities who tried to do it internally and are now. Going up with recruiters because they're internal process.
Ye- yes and no. So McMinnville um, and Twelton are both currently recruiting city attorneys. McMinnville. Um, has been doing it in-house. And. Uh, told me that they have not, that they don't have the pool of applicants they were hoping for. And so they're looking at hiring a recruiter. Uh, the city of Twelton. Did an in-house process and actually they said it was a. Positive and successful process, and they ended up with a great candidate, but that candidate backed out at the last minute. And so now they're looking at switching to a. Recruiter recruiter process.
Maybe give us the name of the person back down.
Make him. Sounds like that person decided they did not want to change jobs.
Any if any when we. Hired. Keith. We hired a firm, but then there was a an in-house component to help. Um, the process. So like any firm we hire, there's going to need, there's going to be an important in-house.
That may as well say is I feel like we should approach it like we did the city manager search.
I think it's important to get a firm. Mainly because it is a position of reports to council. So, yeah.
The state of. Things of trying to find um, important folks. I mean, another challenges the city are having with city attorney. So let's, I'm on board with with hiring a firm.
I guess that's our HR department's crazy backup just.
They've got lots of they've got lots of priorities.
Yeah.
With the exactly.
Use our HR department to assist, but.
Right, and I think it was to the mayor's point that we we used a recruiter and it was a full service recruitment when we. Hold the city manager position, but that still is demanding on staff.
Right.
There's still a lot of work for staff to do even in a full service recruitment.
Yeah. When I reviewed them. I for me, the SGR. Was my first choice, A, from a conflict. With firms that are doing other recruitments currently. My my second. Was either Jensen or um, the local government center. Um, which is um, what the recruitment would have been done, would be done by Ross Schultz, we all know. Um, that's an interesting, it's a much cheaper option. I think we would, it would take more. Staff assistance of the three proposals.
I mean, that was the cheapest one, the second one that you just said. I didn't get a good feeling from them on their proposal for city manager. That's why, no, the. L G P S. Is that what you have?
First, the L G P S, their proposal for city attorney.
Yes.
Yeah, it's. Right, that's why I've got SGR as my number one.
I was super happy with them. I mean, they won't get land, but. They're. Together, putting forward an experience.
Jensen's proposal was good, but they also. Weren't very timely in what they said they were going to provide and. On multiple, actual multiple requests and multiple missed. So that's a concern.
SGR, a great company.
And I started in the middle of the path of person, you know, most expensive.
So you'll experience it for the first time.
I I I'll refer to your guys' opinions to these companies. I Google them all. They. Nice websites. It's about all I could tell.
It was in-house.
Oh, it was in-house, I couldn't remember.
So if if we get these, they would, I would assume they would say, hey, here's the three top candidates, and then we would do the interviewing and. Okay.
Well, there'll be a point, there'll be a meeting with them and it's a it's a it's a it's a process. So yeah, we. Uh, A, we, you know, set up the the pay range, the description of responsibilities. And so that's why. Staff has to help. Um, on some of this, they'll bring their. Expertise in recruiting attorneys as well. And then advertise not just within the state, but outside the state. I mean, I already have. Somebody. On a shortlist, I don't know. I don't know if we can afford them or if they're interested in leaving where they're at, but. You know, if anybody has those kind of things, that's always good to throw names into the.
The only thing with SGR is they won't have to recreate the this about Sherwood. You know how their brochure for it's all this stuff about Sherwood?
Yeah, so I could shorten it.
Can we get your name before we hire these guys and see if they would be good?
I have a, I do have a question for you if you're willing to share, like. From someone sitting on the other side of the table, what was your experience working with SGR?
I I really have nothing but nice things to say about Lynn. Um, we stayed in contact since that thing. She she had great communication and I appreciate it. She just kept me abreast of what was happening in search of things for for calls and twister candidates. Just candidate was really nice. Also, just being able to plan and know when interviews would happen and what to be prepared for and things like that. So she. She did a great job. I don't know the current person that's is part of this, but from that perspective, I thought Lynn did a great job. And I'll say from the staff perspective of of trying to coordinate the recruitment from inside, Lynn was fantastic. I think if if Lynn was the proposed recruiter.
The only hesitation I had at all about this.
She's not available.
Yeah, I literally went to legal orbit city board meeting. Last in the last week and the board hired SGR to do the executive search for the next.
Do they get land?
I'm not sure.
I I'm on board SGR.
I mean, this gentleman has served city manager after thirty five years. I mean, seven cities. And we've had all of our SGR um, goal set and they've been ready. We just have good luck with SGR.
Renee?
I I like SGR. It's just. I like them.
Sean?
Yeah, I I think it's to much of what you all said. I think it's kind of SGR's game to lose. Um, so far they haven't. Steered us wrong, I don't think. And and they have been easy to work with, at least from our side. And it's great to hear. Uh, Keith's experience on the other side of the table, that that is important. Um, and that's, you know, information that we probably can't get from these other ones. Um, I I guess um. Yeah, I mean, I I don't see any other reason that some of the other ones like Jensen and stuff, I. Yeah, to your point, uh, mayor. I I they don't. Missing deadlines for a proposal. It's kind of a big red flag for me. Um, so timelines are all the same essentially for everybody, so I'm I'm good with SGR.
And the local government center recruiting firm, the folks that Ross works, those that work. They are definitely more geared to small, smaller cities around Oregon. Um, that's and that's also reflective of the fee that they charge, so. So from a process standpoint, it fits within the scope of what Keith can um. Engage and contract. And sounds like it's unanimous support of doing so. So if Josh and Keith can coordinate to make that happen. That'd be great. And then. Um, Josh is going on vacation, so it um, will arrange to. Um, do a probably a. You know, a launch with the firm on there and get a time of a timeline, since it's only timeline only really starts once you get them under contract. Um, but it's not a, it's not a thirty day turn. It's a, it's a few months.
I'll be calling in on that.
The um. After that's done, I. Had a conversation with our interim. Our acting attorney, Alan, uh, for when Josh is on vacation. Just to gauge his interest on. Maybe it's they but doing an interim role beyond that. Um, I need to circle back with him. He had to. Check in with his wife. Because she just retired, left Friday from her job. And he doesn't know what trips she has planned for sure, other than there is a trip to Europe in the fall.
Oh.
So um, also go back with him and get him to get a gauge on his interest and come back to council, um, you know, soon on. Yeah, option, you know, multiple options. And I already talked with with Josh. He's got a couple ideas um, as alternatives. I've got an idea for an alternative. You might be inspired. Like, I can go, hey.
All the lawyers I know are. Are great people, but they're a different kind of law, so.
Um, awesome. Well, that went quick. As a reminder. You're on vacation starting this end of the week.
Twenty nine, yes.
And uh, will be gone for a couple of weeks.
And then back for how many days?
Probably two or three.
Two or three?
Yeah. We'll see where things are when I leave on the twenty.
Your list is long, I know. Oh, I did ask, because I, when I. Like that was done a week or two ago and asked like, how did his list? Get transferred to somebody? And he said he would, you know, probably have a list to turn over to that interim one. As counsel, like, I would make sure that gets turned over and turned over and it's turned over. Of all the things.
For one person shop, it's not easy, but thankfully we have cell phone numbers. To uh. To turn on, so.
Is there any value in whatever the list Josh creates? Having it given to the council or given to Keith or just so somebody in-house has a thought of it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be great to see that. So we're all aware of it.
Yeah. You need another chair over here? Our third topic for our work session is um, a general discussion.
As long as it goes.
On the Orland Villa Mobile Home Park. We all became aware of. Some likely changes, at least the the. Landowner gave notice part of the legal process to do things. And I'm going to just turn it over to Josh to kind of. Josh and Keith to talk about. What's going on over there?
Okay, so we we've received a few questions about this. I just want to start very briefly with a. An overview of the process to for an owner to sell the park. These counselors were asking about that. It sounds a lot of this. Isn't really relevant anymore because these steps have all already happened. Um, but.
But it it's it's important for us all to to know. And if anybody is watching this remotely, there you go, yes.
It's not the only, uh, maybe.
Right.
So there's a state law on point. Uh, the purpose of that law was to make sure that tenants of these parks have an opportunity to um, purchase the park if there's going to be a sale. So. Under that statute, the owner is required to give written notice to the tenants. Uh, whenever they intend to market the park for sale or when they receive an offer that they're going to consider. And then notice has to be given to all the tenants or the tenants committee, as well as the state housing and community services department. And it has to include certain information, including about their right to purchase the park and contact information for the housing and community services department. Within ten days of receiving that notice, tenants have to form or identify a tenants committee. For the purpose of purchasing the facility and notify the owner of that in writing. That committee then has an opportunity to basically do due diligence and request certain financial information about the park from the owner. Um, including the asking price, rental related income information, utility costs, insurance costs, et cetera. Within fifteen days after receiving that. Financial information, or if they don't request any within. Uh, after the end of that ten day period after delivery of the notice, the tenants have to either form. Or associate with an entity that is legally capable of purchasing the property. Uh, in this case, typically they form an LLC. And then submit a rare offer of purchase. Is are you Mr. Pierce? Yes, yes. If I'm not mistaken, all of those, you've already followed all of those.
It's all window. That's right. Attorneys have made contact, requested the information. We were told forty five days and they happened to us. We haven't seen it yet.
So sorry, I don't know all these people yet. I'm new here. Are you? Are you the owner of this property or you don't?
I'm tenant.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great.
I'm Mary, Sunny, I'm a tenant.
Great.
There's one home on our street.
Yeah, great.
And seven are owned and twenty four are rented. So you don't have my lot. My lot is here.
Any any questions about the process before I go on to the next slide in general? The next slide is just a copy of what you all, I believe, have in front of you. This is uh. Eric, the planning department.
Josh, I'm sorry, I did have a question. Do we know? Uh, did the owner market the property or did they get an offer? Do you know?
Our understanding is that they got an offer to buy that they were considering. Which means qualification to law. And then we got the notices up. It's the only information we've gotten out of them so far.
So we have no idea what their intent, what the property is.
My belief is that they've got a development in line for the. Lots one through seventeen, I believe. All those on the. Contiguous land.
Yeah.
On the way to build. Remove the trailer modular homes or mobile homes and actually build. Stick homes in the place.
Okay, and then I'm just so I understand all the facts. And by the way, I'm sorry we didn't connect on the phone. We played a fun factor for a little bit, but. The lot, there was a feature you mentioned that some are owned, some are mine. Is that the lot or the mobile home?
No, the lots. It was the original man that came in was wanting everybody to buy their lots. And then it's um, seven came in, sat idle. So then they had another company come in and said, okay, well, they can either buy or rent. I moved in in eighty eight. I was offered to buy my lot, but I couldn't afford it at that time. So I've been renting through seventy, thirty three years.
Okay, okay.
So but that's seven original ones owned and the rest are rented.
That's what the highlights indicate on there. So the lots that aren't highlighted will be part of the.
There's actually six of the thirty of original. Lots. There's twenty four that are rented and six that are owned. For the land.
Yeah, so when I look at this, so lot twenty nine. If you look on here. Is part of that. Lot thirty is privately owned and we're lot thirty one. And we're Maxon.
We are at the end after thirty is just not on.
Yeah, so twenty nine should be yellow. Thirty should not be yellow because that's privately owned. And then on thirty one, which isn't even on the map.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and we were told when. At one point, Maxon said, you know, if you want to buy your property. And we went to some banks and they said that they couldn't loan us the money to purchase the land because it's not a legal lot size. And it has to be five thousand square feet to put a house. I was talking to um, Ms. Chang at the zoning. Office and she said, well, it's actually five thousand square feet to build and my lot's four thousand three hundred and twenty six. So banks couldn't even loan us the money because it weren't legal lots for a single home.
Could, are there legal lots for mobile homes though? I mean, it.
Right, that makes sense. It's a it's a it's a very unusual comment from the banker. Because if if you were able to buy your the the lot under your house.
House, yeah.
It's, you know, it's all legal, so you you can buy the lot. Now, if you. In in theory, and I don't know the answer to this, but in theory, you wanted to um. Um, replace that house. Um, remove it and put a stick built. That might not, that may or may not be allowed. I don't know, but you certainly legally could put another house, another manufactured house on that lot without a doubt.
Right.
If you own, if you own, whoever owns the.
And I just, I feel really bad for some of the people, like the house across the street from us just got purchased like two months ago and they had to take out a bank loan to buy the house. And yeah, and a lot of these homes are too old to move in Washington County anywhere, if you could find property to move them to.
Oh, yeah, it's it is, it's a. Yeah, the which was why I was very. Uh. Happy to hear from Keith, our city manager. I'm Keith Mays. I'm. Yeah, the which was why I was very uh happy to hear from Keith, our city manager, I'm Keith Mays, I'm the mayor. That you guys formed an LLC and 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 quickly.
Some of us have gone in and completely rebuild our homes. Inside out, new sheet rock, all the way up, still ripping all bit, so they're basically just like they're stick to the home at this point, yeah.
Well, and and the people across the street and one of the other people up the street who just rebuilt his home. Asked Mattsons in March, are you know, should we put this money in and should we buy these houses or are you gonna sell? And they said, oh no, you know, Commonwealth's gonna, it's just gonna continue as it was.
Oh, you guys are under Commonwealth?
Commonwealth, it was like two years ago Commonwealth took over because we.
Rental collection, basically. You collect the rent and pass it on.
And they don't do any repairs, but.
We also pay property taxes. That's another thing that you should remember and notice that we pay property taxes on our our homes, they pay it on the land.
Yeah, yeah, which is why we're having the work session. Yeah, and so from a. Timing, they're gonna, they have their. This property owner is obligated in a period of certain number of days to respond with all the information.
Right.
And when you made the offer, have your, did they tell you what um the price was that they received?
They have deal well, absolutely nothing information wise.
Did you just back up, what they supposed to? Did you try to send a letter to them requesting information that we haven't heard back that they got? Request financial management.
Turning around.
There's certain information that they're entitled to, but it does say asking price, he didn't, it sounds like he didn't put it up for sale.
They might not have to disclose.
He's getting an offer. Do they, when I'm not clear on here, or maybe I am clear on here, but it differs from what I heard before, so I want to clarify. If, do they have the right of first refusal, basically, they don't, so the.
The statute that says they have the right to compete to purchase the property.
Oh, and it's still up to the owner as to who they want to sell it to.
And so if they come in significantly under, then he wouldn't have to take it.
He would never take it even if they came over or something.
Okay, and if they came over, then he would, okay, interesting, right?
Well, yeah.
But if you. You know, from um if this person is current owner is looking just about the dollars. Oh yeah, I would imagine that at some point, they should be divulging, you know, to another interested party. What the asking price is so that, you know, the end of the day, the seller could get more money.
I know, it was requested when we responded back to them. Um and like I said, we have an attorney hired that is working on it. But good ass background in real estate, normally on the other side, believe it or not.
Okay.
So, but he sent the letters and everything out and like I said, there's been no response so far.
And that happened last week when you submitted the offer.
June fourteenth.
Yeah.
And do they, as far as you're standing, within ten days. You have not been, so you haven't gotten, even your request for information hasn't been.
Oh, nothing.
And do they have a legal obligation to provide that?
Yes, that's what I thought.
It's what the statute says, I'm not, I'm not gonna be, I can't advise, they have their own attorney who can advise them in terms of their their rights. That is what the, that is what the statute says, sorry, from a statutory.
Right, and from a statute point of view, what we've been told is he asked to respond, tell us everything. But again, when you get a couple attorneys talking to each other, they can negotiate between themselves to what they want to do. Or how they want to proceed.
What does the statute say when it comes to failure to prevent that creation? I said I'd have to double check what the statute actually says, but there is a, there is an obligation to comply with those before they can have a a sale of the property, so. It is, it is one of the conditions to be able to sell the property.
Well, we'll definitely want to stay in the loop with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We'll want to stay in the loop with you to make sure that you do receive that information, hopefully this week or whatever the law.
Requires.
Requires, so that you guys can, yeah, be informed and be competitive and hopefully successful at the end of the day. We certainly want you to be successful, at least I do, and I think I'm safe to say around the table.
Yeah, well, the city really want to get involved in having to go in, the new housing going in there and all uh. You know, utility work that have to be done, street work have to be done, it becomes a big issue real quick.
Mint, most of, most of you have lived in town for, you know, twenty thirty years, so. Right. Right, yeah, so.
In fact, I, yeah, I think that from my standpoint at least, I mean, yeah, if new construction goes in there. You know, the city actually would get paid but for those improvements, but frankly, I wouldn't want to see that because again, the long. I'd rather have long time residents than.
I don't want people.
No one left Sherwood and 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 have a home and all this other stuff, I'd rather see that than say, hey, we've got a shiny building here, so um.
Yeah, the right, the right solution is the one you're pursuing and I.
Yeah, so. Over you a hundred, a hundred percent and it just, it just.
The problem is finding money, so that's something that we could use some expertise on, uh banks are not. I I I was a banker here in town for many years and it's not something that, you know, you can just get a loan as Mary was saying that. You know, uh on our own, even if you were to purchase it, it's hard to get a manufactured home even on prop, putting it on property. So if anybody has ideas, I don't know what Mike's bothering, but financing is gonna be a big thing for us in order for us to get this done.
Actually, the numbers work out very nicely in our favor.
Well.
By what we're assuming, he's asking, are we gonna accept for a lot, they work on our favor very nicely.
I have a question about, we were kind of talking about it, it goes around in circles, the park behind us. Used to be owned by Mattsons, but as we understood it, it was given to the city, he does upkeep on it.
It's a city park.
So is that part of the sale?
Nope.
Because these houses originally, when you look at the original tracks, went another hundred feet out.
Yeah, that's.
To make them legal size.
That's one of the questions I have is when they originally plotted this way back when. The lot sizes were under minimum requirement of the city. And to offset, they put the greenway in there to get the percentage of land up to the level necessary to retrieve with the city.
So it ended up being, it was the, this project um was a PUD.
Right.
And um and when it was approved, I was not elected or on, I don't know if I was even here in town yet. Um when this happened, but it was, it's an approved PUD. And in a PUD, you can do smaller, at the time, you could do smaller lots if there was a public benefit and the public benefit was the park. So um they gave a public benefit, it ended up getting turned over to the city, I don't know if right away or years later. But if the the city owns the the park, maintain the park, um and you have legal lots per the PUD. For the type of housing that you have on.
Okay, so the city does own it?
Yes.
One, one thing also that I found in the statute that might be helpful, your attorney hasn't talked to you about this already, is that. Oregon Housing and Community Services Department can lend money for these purchases under certain circumstances.
Oregon Housing.
The state of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department has a fund for lending money to make.
For this scenario.
Yeah, I believe they're holding until September and.
It's not part, it's not part of the process, is it?
Oh, yeah.
No.
That's very good news.
Yeah, that's a good.
So.
Um there's restrictions on qualifications and all of that, but it's definitely.
But the more, the more options and tools you have available, the better.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, we already contacted Tom's mom and talked to them and first we were told that this year's budget is already used up. For us to wait till next year and then another gentleman talked to him and Rosa said that they're about to open that stuff in September, this September, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's some information I received today was, but it would be for their fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, so that's a year, year.
So let's just.
But is there, but but is it, is it one of those things where if, and again, I don't know if there's somebody else you can hire besides the lawyer, there would be a. You know, a financing expert or whatever, because it seems like if something's in process or you can get a pre qualification or. Or something that they might be able to buy time in a pri- you know, to say, I mean, he's how, how long has he owned this park?
Since the beginning.
Yeah, so you know, thirty years, forty years, something like that, right, so could he wait another six months?
Mattsons only have thirty years, yeah, there was original.
Okay, but so even, but even thirty years saying, hey, could you, could you hang on another six months? But I don't know if that's even a, I mean, again, you'd have to get somebody who's a finance expert, I just.
So offline, there's some things that we don't want you guys to talk in public, this is a broadcast meeting, stuff like that. But um I think offline. It'd be good to check in, to have conversations between you, your group, your LLC, your neighbors and our city manager, just to. Keep abreast of what's happening, including challenges, opportunities. In the process because ultimately, we want you to be successful. And if we have. Connections, um we would definitely want to share those connections.
Are we prohibited in any way from like talking to the press to making our story known?
Oh no, you can tell anybody you want. And if you want the number of the Sherwood Gazette paper or Oregonian, well, okay. And you guys, and and that's, um and you guys have to have to make decisions, we're not gonna. Um you know, we're hoping since you you jumped on the up to push this, you want. You ideally, the current owner is the hero because they sold it to you guys.
Yep.
So, yeah, you mind, correct?
I'm not gonna tell you if that's a, if it's a good thing or a bad thing of putting something in the paper.
Right, but I also, you know, that's why getting somebody a financial expert addition to the lawyer, it feels like, because they might be able to say. To structure a deal where he finances, say, or I, you know, there may be, there might be maybe other things, I'm really a novice at something like this, so.
So are we.
I know, that's.
So the attorney isn't and I'm gonna go with what he says now, he says to do it.
That sounds good.
So Josh had a question, so there's a, there's a year notice period, right? A year, but like, there's, we talked about this, but don't they have to, they they have a year.
So so if they don't, if they're not successful.
There's a year if they have, right?
Then 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 there's, then it kicks into another process.
Right, okay, so my question is, can they? Do they have to wait till the end of the year to actually close a transaction, like close transaction before that? Yeah, I I don't really answer that.
Actually, what we've been advised about it now is if they would sell. And if they told us we had to move out, if we'd have a year to get them out of there, six months and they pay for moving, a year. We have to eat to cost or lose the home. So roundabout or work around it is that when they've owned the property, they can come in and set the rents wherever they want to set them at. Set them, I know that you can't meet them, right?
Well, there's a limit.
Out then and it's theirs.
Yeah, there is a cap on how the percentage that they can raise your rent annually.
That's what I thought.
Seven percent plus CPI, I think. Something like that.
Which is a lot.
Which is a lot, because it could be like ten percent.
Correct.
But.
Kind of, and most people were living in as part of the work.
Right, well, and they, it says in our contract, I think, that we, they would only have to pay two thousand five hundred towards. Moving the house, but there's no place to move the house in Washington County.
That's if you do it in six months, so.
And 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 the 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 um. I believe the, unless the contract got amended, the state laws changed.
So I have.
To the following this process.
Yeah, because I just actually got this from Washington County today and it said in two thousand seven, the state legislature adopted new laws requiring owners. Of closing manufactured home communities to write a year's notice and pay six to twelve thousand dollars to displaced homeowners. That was in two thousand seven.
Is that to move the house or to, because they're displacing?
That's a good question.
Towards layer by that, so.
Now, when you have someone who just bought a house for a hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, you know, in in, yeah.
But I I would definitely up the press, this, this is a, you know, Washington County is putting a lot of energy into trying to. Solve this problem because this, you're not the only community that this has happened to or is happening to. Um I know there's a lot of friendly years in Salem right now, I re-talked briefly with Corbin around about it. It's our house for us in the area, so I would definitely, I I think that's an angle you can play.
Especially affordable housing, that's what.
And where did you get that?
Is that from Washington County?
Yeah, we sit on a committee for Washington County, Tim and I do, um and so the, over the last six months, we've had some conversations on manufactured homes, so they put out. An action plan and um.
You guys can take my coffee.
Okay.
Courtney, who did you mention?
Courtney is, she's our, our representative. State House, our state House representative.
She's wonderful to reach out to.
You know, because big picture wise, there's a lot of conversations going around about middle housing, affordable housing and. You know, the idea that you would replace all this basically affordable housing that we have in town. With uh higher density, unaffordable housing makes no sense and I think you'll have a lot of favorable years sale and the county.
Yep.
I can jump in with a, just a quick question, I stepped away, so maybe this was answered already, but under this stat, state statute, what. Negative implications are there to the current owner if he doesn't follow these statutes?
Yeah, we, that question was asked, I don't recall exactly off the top of my head what the repercussions were, but it was basically, these are the prerequisites to being able to complete a sale. So there there is a, there is some consequence, I just don't recall what it is.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I had to step away to fix our AC, sorry.
No problem, Sean, Sean Garland's the counselor, he's just um because of COVID and safety, he stays, does it remotely, which is what we do now. For all of our meetings.
Was there more to your presentation, was that, you know, Josh?
Okay.
Did you have Keith have something in mind?
I think we pretty well covered everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what's the next check in point, when is, you're gonna be meeting with the city manager and when you hear back?
That was my plan anyway.
Yeah, definitely keep us, if it's ten days, then.
I think he'll keep up something, yeah.
I don't expect him to respond anywhere near the time.
It seems like it was fifteen from the time the request was made. So. What's a little unclear is that third bullet point doesn't seem to have a.
Oh, it's a fourteen, I see.
Right. Time, the time point.
There isn't a timeline for responding with the information, it's just that that information triggers when they have to submit their.
Right.
Offer.
Oh, okay. So it seems to be open in.
So basically, he can't, they can't sell to somebody else because now this is triggered in place.
But that actually works in, that works in their favor though, because if they need some time to get the financing lined up, then you almost want to. The longer he delays, the better.
Yeah, it's a little confusing because. The the receipt of the financial information is what triggers the next step in the process when they have to make an offer, they've already made the offer. Ah, so it's not a hundred percent clear how that fits into the whole picture.
I didn't realize they had made an offer.
They've already made an offer.
But there's nothing with, when you find out about the original offer, nothing preventing you from making a, a new offer. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I certainly.
Please, yeah, please keep the city manager updated so we can remain in the loop.
June thirtieth, we have our attorney meeting with us on spot, he wants to meet in green, so we've got him coming, hopefully he'll have more information to tell us.
Awesome.
So I don't know if any one of you guys want to attend, but June thirtieth, our three, six o'clock, block party, six o'clock, block party, that's right.
Wonderful.
All right.
Okay. Um well, fingers crossed, yeah, keep us in the loop.
We're rooting for you, one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
It was a pleasure.
I'll leave that mic.
Close the.
And the work session is closed.